Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran. I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance and start tonight by asking you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Rosa Torres.
Whoops, present.
Mitchell Moffett.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Lerman.
Present.
Abel Campos, excused. Dana Crutchfield.
Present.
Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Hemmler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are eight members present. We do have a form.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and also on Charter or Spectrum Cable, PSE Channel 191, and it'll be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also recorded, and you can watch it later on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. You click on the video and on-demand link and make your selection there. There are some copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table, so you may follow along with the meeting. And at this time, if you could, and I will too, silence your cellphones so that we'll avoid any interruptions during the meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, turn it on, and also state your name and just the city of your address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission members that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only to be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may either be benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. No, any objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? I'll note that one of the petitioners for community block grants is Domestic Violence Services, and I'm on the Board of Directors, so I'll recuse myself from voting or voting with that. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any member of the Planning Commission hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that none declared. We as the Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record the City Council will use to make its decisions. I encourage you to take full advantage of the opportunity. The first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from July 20th, 2023. The minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. It's pretty lengthy because it includes all the details on the CDVG presentations, but I trust you have the opportunity to take a look, and I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes or if there's any discussion.
I move we adopt the meeting minutes as written.
A second.
All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Moffett and seconded by Commissioner Lerman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. We move on to the agenda item, which is the work, public, or sorry, public hearing items. The first one on the agenda is the community block grant allocation, and Ms. Webb will start us off.
Good evening, Planning Commission. So tonight I'm just gonna have a few brief slides kind of going over what, how staff has decided to come up with a new criteria of how we score the applicants. So we'll just go over that and then if you guys have any questions. I wanted to remind you what the intent of the Community Block Grant Program is. It is to provide annual grants on a formula basis to state, cities, and counties to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environments and by expanding economic opportunities principally for low-to-moder income persons. Next slide. Staff identified a criteria to align with council goals, the Tri-Cities Consortium Consolidated Plan, partial funding possibilities for projects, and whether the applicant's projects met the intent of the CDVG HUD mission. The applicants were given a score based on how many goals their project met the criteria. Also included in your packet is the Risk Assessment questionnaire that is used to determine the project risk. This risk assessment form is from HUD. Next slide. Oh, sorry, the wrong one. Nope. These are the council goals for 2022, 2023. They are quality of life, financial sustainability, community transportation network, community safety, economic vitality, community identity. So these goals were numbered one through six, and if the applicant met one of the goals, they were given a one, and if they met two of the goals, they were given a two, and so on. These are also included in your packet. These are the Tri-Cities Consortium Consolidated Plan goals for 2020, 2024. Increase and preserve affordable housing, community, neighborhood, and economic development, homelessness, interventions, and public services. Just like with the council goals, they were numbered one through three, and if the applicant met one of the goals, they were given a one, and if they met two, they were given a two. Also wanted to note that the Tri-Cities Consortium is made up of all three cities, so it is Kennewick, Richland, and Pasco. On partial funding possibilities for the project with this, if the project could move forward with the application was given a one if they received partial funding, and if the project couldn't move forward, the applicant was given a negative two, a negative one, sorry. This goal is the CDVG HUD mission to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environment and by expanding economic opportunity principally for low-to-moder income persons. With this goal, it was scored one through five, and with this being the intent of how the funds should be expended, this was scored as how the applicant met the intent. If it met the intent, it was given a higher score than if it didn't. I just wanted to bring to y'all's attention the CDVG fund allocations for the last four years. The couple of slides that you're gonna see next are broken down by years with the totals and percentages that was spent in each goal. For 2021, we did add in the Section 108 debt payment, which you will see in the next couple of slides. This total amount increased to help cover the principal payment and the unique variable interest rate. Same for 2022. And in 2023, the Section 108 debt payment allocation was increased to $250,000, which only covers the principal amount and sum of the interest as of August. We've already paid $318,000 for the Section 108 debt payment, and we still have one more interest payment in October. This slide shows the CDVG fund allocations for 2020 through 2023 with the totals and percentages. So public service is at 11%, Section 108 is at 23%, housing is at 23%, and economic opportunities is at 43%. And these are the 2024 CDVG products and the total score, which is the first column, based on the criteria that I just explained. The next column is the amount requested. The third column is the average of the funds that the applicant has received over the last four years, and the final column is going to be staff's recommendation, which we will bring back at the September Planning Commission meeting. So all we're really looking forward tonight is to hear from any applicants that are in the office, in the room, and then we'll have you close the public hearing, and then next month we will bring back staff's recommendations. So if there's any questions, I'll do those before we hear from any of the applicants.
Yes, Commissioners, if you have any questions for Ms. Webb, this would be a great time. One of the things I was gonna point out, maybe when you come back, I like, this is great that you did the consolidated score. It'd be great also if you can remind us next month, maybe another column that has the risk of each, the assessed risk of each, because then we could weigh their score on the goals against the risks that they present, right? If that's helpful, it's helpful for me. I don't know if it's helpful for others. Hopefully it's not too much trouble.
No, no.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And then possibly pigging back on what you just shared there. So looking at the total 20 applicants, there is eight that received a score of five. And out of those eight, 40% or half of them, sorry, end up receiving funding. So maybe having that information might help differentiate what's the difference from a five that received and a five that did not.
So we've never done this kind of criteria before. Usually it's just staff has a meeting, and we kind of go over everything, and then something's decided. So, but yeah, we can, we can try and figure that out, so.
I wanted to clarify that the amounts that you see here are the average amount of funds they've been, they've received over the past several years, not what the current recommendation is.
Yeah.
And then I have another question, too. So the number six, is that $6?
Oh, it's supposed to be $6,000, sorry. Yeah, it's on the screen.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Commissioners?
Yeah, this Commissioner, there's a question about the form, the Risk Assessment Form. Is there a, did you say, did I hear that we got that form from HUD, and is the first time it's being used?
No, we use it every time.
Oh, okay, great.
We just received, we got the form from HUD. This is HUD's form for us to use.
I think you're saying that the criteria of scoring was the first.
Yeah, the criteria, the way we're scoring them is new, but not the form itself.
That's what I was referring to. So it's the first time we use that criteria. Yeah, I had not seen it before, so thank you.
Any other questions before we open it up for petitioners?
So one more question. Looking through the 2023 CBG funds, the very bottom pie chart. So with 43% being the economic opportunities, for the goals that fit that, would you say that that category may possibly have a stronger weight than some of the other goals?
Well, over the past several years, we have actually had more people apply for public service activities. The economic opportunity one is usually our incubator kitchen, which is PSK downtown, and then also Public Works Projects. So they just happen to get a little bit more funding than the other applicants.
Thank you.
All right, unless there are other questions from the Commissioners, I think we'll open it up to our first presentation. And the public hearing. Angie, you want to go ahead?
Good evening. My name is Angie Pacheco, and I reside in the City of Pasco, and I work at Domestic Violence Services of Benton and Franklin Counties in Kennewick, Washington. And just to give a little bit of service identity of what we provide, we provide a 24-hour crisis line that's bilingual, shelter services to domestic violence clients, where we can service up to 22 persons, and one of our shelters is located in Richland. And we help with support in the legal system with clients when they're moving forward in reference to any of the restraining orders that they may need help with, housing assistance for rent utilities and deposits to our clients, food and transportation funding. We recently opened a thrift store to provide job skills to our clients and to youth in the community. And we are opening up a new affordable housing program with 10 units in Richland. And then our outreach to the community. We applied for extended services for outreach to the community. In Pasco, we've been servicing the Tri-Cities out of Benton County for over 20 years. This is our 20-year anniversary, and we wanted to bring a presence to the City of Pasco and Franklin County, so we had an opportunity to service more families. We did apply for $70,000, and we would be looking for funding for up to $30,000 to sustain the program. This would be to hire two members of the community in Pasco that fit your criteria on creating jobs for low-income persons. So there would be two jobs that would be created out of this application. And then 800 individuals is what we intend to service principally under the benefit of low-income persons. That's your number one goal. So we're trying to meet the goal of number one and number three for the City of Pasco application that we submitted. Is there any questions? Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone else with a presentation for the community?
Good evening. I'm Steve Howland. I'm with the Y and Z of the Greater Detroit Cities. I reside in Kennewick, responsible for the operation at the Martin Luther King Center for the Y, and I specifically want to address a question that came up by Mr. Moffett about adult programming. Like Jeff Moore alluded to it, but we've got about 500 adults that participate in the program over at the King Center. The King Center is run predominantly for youth, but it's open for everybody. So the weight room, the gym, we'll do drop-in basketball. We see 500 members, and then we see a whole lot of people come in on a day pass. We're probably looking about 800 adults that come in throughout the year to use the facilities with the kids. And it's quite often the parents and kids coming together. We'll find one of the kids in the computer lab, mom or dad working out, somebody playing basketball, and then coming back together. So it's a small mini YMCA that brings them all together, but obviously the focus is on the kids and has been since about 1983. So I want to address that question. See if there are any other questions that I can answer for anybody else.
Any questions?
Thank you all. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else for community development block grant program? Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing since there, and there was no one on the phone, correct?
No, just our Commissioners.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing for community development block grant portion. Also, just as Ms. Webb said, we will, staff will come back with their staff recommendations, and then the commission will make their decision next month.
Yes, and I just wanted to remind everybody that the funding issue for 2024 is only $716,000. So with all the applicants that we did receive, we have a deficit of $1,008,000, so.
With the recommendations, could we see a total, like, of what that would look like? So we can compare to that, to what's available?
Yeah, I will actually, the first spreadsheet that I gave you guys, I'll put that one back in there, and it has the total for you guys, so.
Yeah, because I think you could probably consolidate, like, all the, since we have the detail on this one, maybe your next summary could just be like the thing, their score, the risk, and then dollar amount.
Sure, I can do that, yeah.
Just a clarification, this, I think it's $768 next year, is that what it was? Something like that? Yeah.
Uh, $716,000.
716.
Yeah.
That has to cover the debt payment as well, right? So it's really, when you subtract the debt payments, even less to go around. So it's definitely a smaller year than we've had.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the next.
Commissioner, if I may add, I think one of the intensive staff, usually we go from one workshop to a public hearing with a recommendation, but what we wanted to do this year was spend a little bit more time this evening in particular to address any concerns, comments, or questions from the commission or members of the public regarding the criteria. As Ms. Webb mentioned, there's certainly, there's a gap of $1.8 million in what we have available versus the total request. And I think this commission has been well-involved in the various planning efforts over the last several years, where staff has made an intentional effort to align our funding or policies and goals with the higher-level policies and goals, in this case, council goals, the intent of the HUD program itself and CDVG, which is why there's a little bit more refined, but sort of our first attempt this year at aligning the applications with how they meet the goals itself. So if there's any questions on that itself, staff is certainly happy to answer or address those as we can this evening. It is a question that we get every year when we go before council about how do these applications line up with the goals, and that it will be an effort that we incrementally work on each year, but wanted to at least give commission another opportunity to provide any comments or questions either today or we email at a later time about that process itself.
Excellent. And honestly, I think that's one of the things that's bothered me in previous years is there is no rhyme or reason on how, an objective measure on how we're arriving at our decisions, and you can, at least it's defensible that we're basing, aligning our decisions with a criteria and a scoring based on that criteria versus, well, I think this one sounds good versus, hey, this one actually has a high score, and the risk is where it should be, right? So those are the kind of the factors. I like that, but I'll open it up. If any of the Commissioners have questions about the criteria that Ms. Webb went over, this would be a good time to give feedback or ask. We can do that.
I know, my question. I do have a compliment, though. So when you're more transparent with the public and the opportunity for them to be able to learn and be able to make correction in the future, and then when those are awarded, they can be able to share out, you know, how they got there, what part of the rubric did they fit into the goals, and so thank you very much for your transparency.
Agree. Good stuff. Anything else?
Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that we, I was understanding that the criteria, especially the ones for the council goals, I guess the way that we're scoring it is all of the goals have equal weight, right? Yeah, so there's not a priority of what those, of what council wants to.
Yeah, they're all equal, so.
All right, cool. Thanks.
All right. Last opportunity, and otherwise we'll move on to the second public hearing item. Okay, let's move on to the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, and I assume that'll be Mr. Gonzalez.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This is a public hearing for the recommendation from staff to the commission for the Housing Action Implementation Plan. You may recall that this is a plan that staff has been working on with our consultant team, our consultant team for about a year, year and a half now. We did receive a grant award from the Washington State Department of Commerce to help produce this plan. So there's certain requirements associated with that grant that we must include in terms of the analysis and evaluation associated with the planning effort. But this is a planning effort that certainly is in line with council goals and follows up several of the recent policy decisions by both commission and council over the last several years. So wanted to sort of, with this opportunity tonight, kind of do a re-summarary of what the intent of the plan is and where we're at, and certainly address the question of why we need this in the first place. So the goal and the purpose of the housing plan is to encourage the construction of a variety of housing types, make them more easily accessible, and have a greater variety of options available to today's residents and those residents that we'll call Pasco home in the, in the future. The, the plan itself is intended to be a policy document that outlines how to meet Pasco's housing demands, and we have quite a few, along with providing a comprehensive roadmap to implement an effective and practical plan that is tailored for the City of Pasco. So while there's certainly good references to make from other communities and other states and other regions, the, the plan and the recommendations that are part of the draft that you see in your packet were, are refined and vetted to make sense for us here locally. So in terms of the housing needs and how the housing plan informs the rest of our efforts here at the city, it certainly will be a key part of our next major comprehensive plan update, which will be due in June of 2026. So we will begin developing sort of the vision and framework for the next comp plan within the next several months, and then intended to guide the implementation strategies, which impact everything from the zoning code, development regulations, prioritization of funding in both the capital improvement plan or the transportation improvement plan, also addressing things like fee structures and other programs, not only associated with this direct plan, but as Ms. Webb mentioned earlier, the CDVG allocation has a significant weight on housing itself. So this aligns very strongly with a lot of the plans that are already in place today in Pasco and certainly here in the region. One of the key pieces of any major planning efforts, certainly one with regards to housing, is who we've reached out to and who was able to provide input. And so we've held three housing stakeholder workshops back in December of 2022. We had one in May. We had one last month in July, and we will have a fourth one in September. And there's been a great diverse stakeholder group that's been actively participating both at these sessions and in between these sessions. So there's been a lot of refinement that's happened in between each discussion as well. These range from some of our chambers of commerce to developers, both private and nonprofit, some that are involved with social service organizations, private developers, realtors, the Benton Franklin Health District. Certainly there's a relationship between access to housing and public health and nonprofit organizations. So we feel really comfortable and quite confident about the involvement we've had from the organizational and agency standpoint with, with this planning effort. And no major, a major plan would be, you know, considered complete without making sure that our own residents had an opportunity to provide input as well. So late in the spring and early summer, we were out with a community housing survey, really excited about the number of responses of over 850 responses. And I just wanted to highlight a few of those responses today, because we haven't really had a chance to focus on some of the highlights from the survey results today, but we asked typical questions, you know, do you live in Pasco? Do you work in Pasco, the age, et cetera? But I'll point out a few that stood out for staff, and that was of the 800 or so, 850 or so responses that 85% of them currently own their home. And 80% of the survey responses have at one point in their life lived in a studio apartment, a townhome, or a multifamily apartment, duplex, triplex, et cetera. The top three priorities based on the survey responses were to keep housing in good conditions. So that's very relevant to the discussion we just had with the block grant allocations when we think about the code enforcement and inspection services staff who help run our rental inspections. Those staff are out in the community making sure that units that are built, units that have been built five, 10, 15, 20 years ago, remain in a, in a condition that is safe for residents to, you know, feel comfortable living there. So that has been identified as priority number one by the public responses. Number two was to simply expand access to homeownership, and number three was to increase the housing supply. So those two obviously relate quite well with each other. 62% of the responses to the survey had indicated that Pasco would benefit from more housing options. So more than what we have today, both in diversity and certainly the amount. And this one stood out, that almost 80% had shared that housing, the housing challenge is something that impacts somebody they know, either a relative, a coworker, a friend, or a neighbor. So while it may not impact us directly, it does, at least based on the survey responses, impact more than 80% of those folks who took the survey. So those are some of the reasons as to why Pasco has pursued and needs to pursue additional options for housing in the city. A little bit about sort of the housing profile in terms of the, the change in home value since 2010 through 2022. These numbers are obviously different midway through 2023, but between Pasco- These numbers are obviously different midway through twenty twenty three, but between Pasco, Kennewick, Richland, Yakima and Wallawala. Uh Pasco had the highest increase of housing um at over a hundred and thirty-seven percent. So an increase of over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars between twenty ten and twenty twenty two. And obviously wages and incomes have not kept up with that rapid rate. Here you can see um the housing cost um in income trends. Um uh predominantly looking at median owner income and the median renter income. In the blue, you see the median owner income has increased between twenty ten and twenty twenty one um from fifty-six thousand uh just over uh eighty-five. Um and on while there's been increase in renter income, certainly not at the same rate. Um so there's a little bit of a disconnect um there as well. So using uh numbers uh from twenty twenty-three, again, these are always estimates, so there's a little asterisk in terms of the numbers. Because these typically are different today than they are when this snapshot was taken. The average rental uh price in the city of Pasco today is uh twelve hundred and seventy-two dollars. Uh which based on um area median income would be affordable to households making uh almost fifty-one thousand dollars. And the median sale price of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, again likely dated at this point, is affordable to households making uh over ninety-six thousand dollars a year. Our median household income in the city of Pasco is roughly seventy thousand dollars or so. And uh the term affordable here is based on the uh the HUD definition of thirty percent or more of your income. So obviously, we have a disproportionate amount of um our household incomes uh required to to pay for housing either at a homeownership level. Or um a rental level. So when we talk about what are we gonna need in the future, uh we can talk about just how fast this region is con- gonna continue to grow. Um so Pasco will be home to uh uh well over a hundred and forty-three thousand residents by the year twenty forty-five. So for those on the commission that re- recall our comprehensive plan effort, back at that point, we were looking at the year twenty thirty fi- twenty thirty-five, twenty forty. And we were looking at a population somewhere around uh around a hundred and twenty-five thousand people. So the rate of uh population growth has gone up. It's likely to be expected. Um and it looks like the city of Pasco will be home to over a hundred and forty thousand residents by the year twenty forty-five. So that's an increase of over sixty-five thousand residents from today's population. So we have a population of around eighty-one thousand or so today, and we're gonna essentially double by the year twenty forty-five. And what that means for housing is that we need a a whole lot of it. In fact, we need more than twenty-three thousand housing units uh to accommodate that kind of growth. Um here at the city of Pasco, those twenty-three thousand housing units, they include the current undersupply. Of approximately seventeen hundred units. So today, uh the city of Pasco has an undersupply of seventeen hundred units. And uh when we do forecast in terms of how many units do we need per year. The comprehensive plan had estimated we need somewhere between six hundred to eight hundred units per year uh to accommodate that growth. So when you kind of juxtapose that with the fact that we're already behind. Almost two thousand units and that may increase in the next twenty or so years. Certainly puts some added pressure on the available housing stock and the the residents looking for any form of housing in the city. Yeah, I thought this was interesting that um when uh the chart you see here shows the percentage. Of the units necessary based on the household income. And what is interesting here is that uh almost forty percent of the housing we will need by the year twenty forty-five. Will be needed to support households that make a hundred percent or more of the median income. So a lot of times when we talk about housing needs, we certainly wanna focus on the folks who are at the lower end of the household income scale, but in Pasco's case, that's still true. But what is also true is that almost forty percent of the housing we need by the year twenty forty-five is for folks making well over the median income. Of the community, so that that's fairly striking. So uh after uh several workshops with our community members and stakeholders, uh looking at the priorities identified um by uh the members of the public via the community survey. Um the uh housing action plan has five um primary recommended strategies. These are also identified in the plan and also in the staff report. Strategy number one is uh to remove regulatory barriers and encourage the development of a variety of housing types. And this commission and our city council has been uh moving aggressively to remove unnecessary burdens to housing construction. I I I think I'm not biased in saying this. I think it's just that the truth that Pasco's been uh one of the leaders in the Northwest at addressing some of the barriers to housing construction of the last several years. Um strategy number two, a- and that is to say that we're making significant progress on number one. Uh number two is to increase opportunities for homeownership. Um that may include looking at programs like the CDBG program as well to see how we can use that and leverage that to increase access to homeownership. Uh number three is to expand the supply and increase in access to affordable housing. Number four is to build housing for Pasco's special population groups. You may recall that in previous planning commission meetings and presentations. Uh Pasco's got um a rapidly um uh aging population. Uh where more than half of our seniors in the city of Pasco are a cost burden. Which is uh challenging because they're likely going to be on fixed income, the right and the raise of their housing will just continue to increase. Um and then number five, on the city, uh the strategy is to mitigate the displacement of vulnerable residents. One of the key ways to mitigate displacement is to make sure that there's more housing options available to help with the uh the housing filtering that occurs as folks. Age out of one place and move into a new place, but also as a age out of one place and then maybe want to downsize in the future. Um so those are the five recommended strategies. Those also uh meet the criteria associated with the Washington State Department of Commerce and Grant as well. So in terms of next step, staff is seeking the planning commission's comments today, but certainly um want to address anything we can. Uh we are recommending uh that the commission uh approve the the housing plan and then that'll be off to council. Um in between that time, we would like to conduct another stakeholder workshop so that those stakeholders get another opportunity to take a look at. The draft that's been uh changed since the last time they saw it. We'd like to make sure that by the time this gets to council, it's been well well vetted. And then uh early this fall, this will be in front of council uh for uh discussion and recommendation. And then soon after, we'll be off to the Department of Commerce, sort of put stamp on it, and then um uh we will continue working on the implementation of it, so. That concludes this presentation. Fairly significant effort. Uh not every community uh pursued this grant opportunity. We're certainly appreciative of the Department of Commerce uh to have this opportunity to address this challenge that the city Pasco is facing, obviously rapid population growth. Um and I think what it demonstrates is that we're, even with all the changes that we made over the last several years. Um the the challenges may increase, and so keeping things the same certainly won't fix the issue. Um and even the implementation of all these strategies won't solve all the issues, but they certainly at least will eliminate uh some of the things that are in our control. So happy to answer any questions um from the commission or anyone in the audience this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um can you remind us what the com- commerce grant is, provides, does, conditions, strings?
Yeah, it it, you know, there wasn't a lot of strings. Essentially, they they wanted us to, the requirement was to put together a comprehensive housing action plan, so. Tell us what your demands are, tell us what your needs are, and tell us some strategies of how you you're gonna attempt to address those. So uh the city of Pasco uh was fortunate that we applied. Uh we received the full uh request. We requested a hundred thousand dollars to pay for the consultant team and the um. Uh the consultant team to help us with all the outreach and uh engagement efforts as well. Um and uh and we received and we received that, so um this is uh the result of all that effort.
So the um. The next, and this is, by the way, this has come a long way since just even last month, so thanks for all the work on this. Are are, I I guess all I'll do is probably open it up for feedback and questions from the commissioners, and then we'll open the public hearing on the matter. So commissioners, are there things that, questions you have about the presentation or the plan itself? Um or their feedback you have based on what you saw in the plan?
So Commissioner Moffett, I have three questions or clarifications. Um three points anyway. So the the average rent encompasses all types of rentals, correct? Uh apartments, duplexes, single-family homes, okay? And then uh the second one is, so and the and the date I remember was twenty forty-five, right? So um that's a lot of housing in twenty to 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 build in it. Does the city limits encompass enough vacant land that would. Allow that to happen, or is the city looking at expanding its borders to encompass more property?
One of the bene- I I shouldn't say this out loud, but I will. One of the benefits of of the city being late in adoption of our comprehensive plan. Was was that, quite frankly, it allowed us to use newer data in the forecast. So the city of Pasco, uh when we developed that comprehensive plan, several of you recall those those one conversations. Um both when we looked at the um. The housing capacity analysis, so we a buildable lands analysis, so how much vacant land exists and of that vacant land, how much of it is reasonable to actually consider for. Housing. A lot of it is landlocked, so it means it's not available for housing. A lot of it doesn't have adequate infrastructure, so that. Limits what kind of housing can be built there if all, if any, at the first place. And so then we, once we figured out what that that gap was, then we needed to look at expanding our urban growth area. And so in September or so of twenty twenty-one. Uh our urban growth area was approved by the Franklin County, which is the state um requirement for counties to approve the urban growth area. And we um our forecast had estimated that. At that time, if we made certain policy regulations that have since been adopted, that we could accommodate um. The housing growth that Pasco was expecting to receive over the next eighteen to twenty years, which at that time. Was about a forecast year of twenty forty. So we have another five years to work with. It is likely that we will begin looking at our urban growth area. And a housing capacity analysis as part of our next comprehensive plan, which this commission will be heavily involved with, so. I think we're there, but we're gonna need to take another look at it because it it's always changing.
My last. Same thing. Just for our, for for my own edification, if not others, uh how does the vacant land inside the city limits, inside the urban growth area affect housing prices, or does it? You know, how much is available? Like, for example, if we were coming close to our top end. Would housing prices be more or less, or would it would it, or does it make any difference at all?
I think generally, the lack of supply is gonna increase the cost of housing, just like it would with any good. Um and I think that's that's been one of the the challenges with housing in particular, because we typically, we've regulated, and I say we in the terms of municipalities. We regulate housing a lot differently than we do with vehicles. For example, historically, the city of Pasco. Uh restricted eighty percent or more of its zoned land for one particular kind of home. A detached, single-family home on a large lot, which may make sense if you're never growing, except Pasco has grown and grown and grown and grown, except that. Policy and regulation remained in place. And when you have that regulation in place in every other community, you can see today is what the challenge, that's what it yields today is a housing challenge, a housing crisis. What what we know is that um the research has shown that. Uh at least in metropolitan areas, that the increase of housing availability or housing units constructed. So everything from a detached, single-family home to a high-rise will increase property values, so it's not a decrease in property values, the more dense you get. Um and that uh the lack of housing supply has been um predominantly constrained by the fact that. The extreme regulatory constraints on it limit what you can do. So even though in the city of Pasco, for example, we've made our zoning code more flexible. There are still other requirements um that we are gonna wanna take a look at. The residential design standards, for example, that this commission passed. Uh back in uh November of twenty twenty-two. Those began to chip away at those other sort of um tho- those other uh requirements and barriers in the zoning code that um prohibit housing from being built. Everything from lot sizes to setbacks, uh we haven't looked at height yet, but that will be something that our council wants us to look at. But every time you chip away at those barriers, you begin to have more options. And again, it's an option, it's not a requirement. Um and and I think at least being able to eliminate those will help us identify where other solutions. Maybe possible, but it's difficult to identify solutions when we have barriers um on the housing product itself.
This is Commissioner Lerman. I have a couple of questions piggybacking off of Commissioner Moffett. Um one, you're talking about potentially middle housing, the empty land in between uh homes. Have, has your department looked into the middle housing grant that just recently came out of the Washington Department of Commerce?
We have, and we're gonna apply, even though we've already adopted some pretty good codes, um but it doesn't help to make our code uh better. So we will look into that for sure.
And then second, as we talk about a variety of houses, I haven't seen the word condo ever used. And if you can go ahead and share out the why behind that, appreciate that.
Some of this is gonna be above m- my brain power, but it there, years ago, there was some strict liability. Um regulations placed on condos and the liability associated with the construction and anything that. Uh sort of problems that arise from condos, so na- uh around the state, there was a significant decrease in. Uh developers wanting to do condos because of liabilities associated with them. Uh the legislature this year did uh pass uh at least one bill that attempted to address that. I don't know what the result of that's going to be. Um but the the intent was to at least reallow more condo construction to be uh uh attractive in the first place.
And then second question on that, so what's difference from a condo and a townhouse? Because we have some townhouses here in Pasco.
Yeah, and this is where we've we've had this challenge in staff, because, you know, typically, we wanted to find every single kind of home. But the reality is we're starting to get into various types, and so townhomes are typically um uh they they are on their own lot. Um and you share a wall, uh whereas condos, my understanding, is you might be in maybe a three, four, five or higher story building. So you you share more than just a wall.
Any other questions or feedback for Steph? Uh one of the things I was gonna suggest is, you know, as you do the additional workshops and then as you take it to council, assuming that's the recommendation. Um one of the things I noticed on the housing strategies, the five strategies are um. It might be good to talk, and I know metrics are hard, but it might be good to say, how do we know we're succeeding at these strategies? How do we know what success looks like? How do we measure this strategy? And it might be be good to come up with in each of those five, you know, what does success look like and how do we know we we were getting there?
This is Commissioner Torres. Um. One of the other things I think that would be interesting to know, or maybe that is included, but maybe um we need to highlight a little bit more is because um. I feel like the the housing plan um points out, you know, we need this because we're growing so quickly. Um but maybe there's also, you know, some other costs that we would incur or like um. I guess, you know, down uh or like, wh- what will we be putting at risk for our community if we don't have an effective housing plan like? Are we gonna start losing, you know, investments into the community? Um, you know, I'm just kinda talking off the top of my head, but um. But that might be something also to kinda talk about here, is that what else, you know, even if it it is subjective, but. Um and we, none of us have a have a crystal ball to know what's gonna happen in the future, but. To also think about, like, if we don't have a a an effective housing plan, you know, what is, what what gets put at risk for our community as a whole?
A- absolutely. In fact, you know, what we know so far during the the, I guess, the findings portion of the of the housing plan was that. The median sale price is only affordable to one um profession um in the city of Pasco, which is folks working in the information and technology sector. So there's several twelve or thirteen different sectors, agriculture, service industry, uh local government, et cetera, government, et cetera, public education. Only the folks, um uh the residents working in information technology based on median wages could afford the median home price in the city of Pasco. One of the tasks that we've asked our consultant to look at is to forecast what that means throughout the next twenty years, so if we know that we're growing. Um more in food service and retail than information technology, does that mean that we're gonna have more folks not able to afford. Uh the median home price in the city of Pasco, because that's just the way our um uh our economic um uh job opportunities are growing. Um that'll be a significant part um of our economic development strategy, which um we're working on as well. But but I will also mention that uh we we coordinate and collaborate with our industrial and economic development partners all of the time. Uh both with the Port of Pasco, the other ports uh in our region, and certainly Tridec. And including the Washington State Department of Commerce, and I had the opportunity last week to present at the Washington Economic Development Association Conference on housing. Because they have indicated as housing as being the biggest problem that large employers and new employers trying to retain their their workers. As having, and um I think the port uh will will often mention to us that the first two questions they get from any new large prospective employer is. Do you have the workforce and then do you have the housing? And so we may have a little bit of the workforce, but we not may, we may not have the housing to support that workforce, so. Um it will be an economic development constraint if we do not have housing options for residents. Um it will be an economic development constraint if we do not have housing options for residents.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
So I love what you're sharing about um trying to go back and get the information to be able to quantify. Who can be able to afford the future homes. And so if you could turn that to a graphic, that would be wonderful to be able to uh share out and. I think more people would be able to see, this is where I'm at. This is how many I know can be in that small little zone in twenty forty five. So thank you.
You shared, some of that's in the report, but you shared some of that data about who can afford and it's in the presentation of last month, but yeah. Definitely good to know. Kind of the impacts as Commissioner Torres and Lerman were pointing out. Any other feedback or questions from the commissioners before we open it up for public? Anyone on the phone? Always forget the phone folk. All right. If you're here to speak on this item for the public hearing, please come forward and uh give us your name and city of address.
Good evening, Commissioners. Peter Harpster, Oktara Engineering. Our address is twenty eight fifteen St. Andrews Loop, Suite C. Here in Pasco. Um I spoke last month on this, I won't repeat any comments, but um. One thing that um I do like with this plan is, you know, we're working on several different developments and projects from garden-style apartments to duplexes, single-family homes. And uh multifamily housing projects. And um. When deciding what kind of project we're gonna do, typically asking what's the highest and best use of the land. You guys are faced with that question often. And um having a housing plan like this is super helpful in making those decisions. We can look at the data, uh like Director Gonzalez said, and and. Uh make informed decisions. So I said, you know what? Let's do single-family homes here for whatever reason, cause we've done in the past. We can look at the data and say, okay, there's a segment of population that needs um. Uh housing that's more towards the lower end and uh housing is towards the higher end as well. And so um. We appreciate the data like that that's contained in this plan and um. Definitely in favor of the plan and um appreciate the involvement from staff and um. Would uh uh recommend that Planning Commission make a uh vote of recommendation to move forward to the council so we can. Um kinda wrap this up and looking forward to the last workshop meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Anyone else? Great, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Francic and I'm here representing Basin Disposal. I really appreciate uh not only the pack that you put out, but your thoughtful discussion. My comments are really tangential to this. Um we have a garbage company and we run by your house every single week as you are looking at new, different kinds of housing. We fully applaud that. We know it's necessary in Pasco, but we ask that you keep garbage pickup in mind as you do it.
Important. Thanks for being here tonight. All right. Anyone else here to speak on this item for public hearing? Second call? And nobody on the phone, right? Okay. And final call. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing uh on the housing development implementation and uh. What's the na- uh the the, for us tonight as commissioners, um if there is further discussion or if there are other questions or feedback for the staff. We can do that now. Um if not, then I would entertain a motion for recommendation.
This is Commissioner Lerman. I have one more question. Um so. I also haven't heard, and I don't see it in this pack either, conversation or data about SROs. And so um how does that fit into this or how come it's not in here?
SROs have been an active conversation amongst um our council. In fact, on Monday, we presented an update on the status of the SRO projects, not only in Pasco, but but in our region. Um. Single room occupancy housing t- right now is under moratorium that is set to expire on September seventh. Um staff is in recommendation of removing that moratorium. SROs are typically seen as one um. Uh tool in the uh toolkit of sorts for housing. Um there are, there have been some concerns, and I think rightfully so about the um. Uh the intention of SROs is that they offer more affordable units um available for for folks at different um, you know, uh points of their life. Um fortunately, those SROs are also uh renting at market prices. So we're seeing SROs uh right up around that twelve hundred or so uh median price point. Um but we have looked into that. A lot of them are offering uh one month off, two month off, three month off. So it it, although initially is a. Um single room occupancy housing. Um so tiny, uh it it can either be a a tall, a a tiny studio apartment or. Um a unit that has shared facilities like kitchenettes, et cetera, multiple on the same floor. Um we have two uh in Pasco. One is in operation. Um. I don't know the occupancy off the top of mind, and we have a second one that um is in construction right now.
Thank you.
Uh can you remind uh be- between now and twenty forty five, there will be other urban growth. Expansion opportunities, right? So even though. Uh and even in the new one like Broadbore and some of that expansion, we have more uh more increased use of mixed options, and so that helps with the situation. But even between now and twenty four forty five, there'll be other options to extend that and even have more land and types of land. Is that correct or incorrect?
There certainly will be opportunities for us to uh evaluate and apply and request expansions. Whether those expansions are granted or appealed is a different um story. I would expect though that urban growth areas will be subject at the state level um over the next several years as we deal with the housing crisis and just the the rapid population growth.
Thank you. All right, one last, any other? Go ahead.
Commissioner Crouchfield, I have a question on strategy one. Maybe it's in the bulk of this document, but it talks about. Removing regulatory barriers, and I wondered if there could be more specific about some of those because. Some of those may be somewhat of a protection to guide development. So I I know one perhaps maybe was school impact fees or. I I'm not sure, and I would like to have more information about, cause that's pretty general.
Yeah, so the draft, it's the document itself goes into refined detail about what each of these strategies includes, and we presented on those um back in July. Uh with regards to impact fees, although impact fees has been one of the uh biggest barriers that we've uh that's been shared by our our housing community. Um as a barrier to new construction because it it puts all of the costs upfront. Um meaning it's on the shoulders of the developer and the builder to to shoulder the significant cost. Which are necessary to obviously construct schools or uh accommodate uh uh new uh vehicle traffic. Or uh new parks, for example. Uh but the challenge is that uh typically those are required at the front of the project, meaning the moment they come in and get a permit. Just to start their project, the fees are due. Yet they don't know whether those projects are gonna be completed, uh cause there's always a risk with the project. They don't know at the level that they may have an indication about what they may sell at or rent at. There's never a guarantee. And so uh the city of Pasco is actively working um with school district to to see if there's a deferral that may be an option. Uh for uh uh larger projects to take advantage of a deferral. So not an elimination, but but a deferral. So paying at a later time, but guaranteeing that both the impact fee is paid, but done sort of time that um doesn't uh. I guess restrict or uh be overburdened some to a project in particular.
That was the main regulatory barrier that you were referring to. Number one.
Actually, five listed, if you.
Okay.
In the plan. There's five different ones that you can. Lot size, setbacks, heights, parking, density, fees. There's a bunch of.
And those will be just citywide. There's no res- like different spots where they may be.
There's likely to be areas that are a little bit more tailored to to more development than others, for sure, in in infrastructure availability being one of them. You you certainly don't wanna locate um a lot of residents in the, you know, heavy industrial area, for example, or an area that is unsafe or that is a critical or natural habitat. Um but areas that that have have more access to um uh goods and services. Uh parks, uh schools, or active or um active pedestrian amenities, things like that. Those would be areas that you tend to. Uh best practices will tend to recommend to allow for more options.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or feedback? While I then entertain a motion or recommendation.
I've uh moved to close the public hearing on the draft housing action and implementation plan and recommend the Pasco City Council adopt the draft plan as contained in the. August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We uh had Commissioner Torres move and Commissioner Lerman second, and I think Commissioner. Mendez the third, so. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion passed unanimously, and I guess it moves on to, the draft plan moves on to council. Workshop is in, uh and so it's not done, but uh it's done for us for now.
Yeah, if there's any substantial changes, we will uh certainly bring that back to the commission, sort of as an old business item, but re- regardless if there's. Changes or not, we will come back to the commission with periodic updates of how it's being implemented, monitored, and if it's been, if it's successful or not. So, thank you.
We have no other items on the works, uh public hearing or the workshop. Uh is there any other business that anyone has?
I got three quick items um if I can uh for the commission. Um one is that uh each of you um hopefully has a beautiful downtown Pasco master plan book. In front of you, we will have those available um here at City Hall. We'll also be sharing those with our libraries here at the city of Pasco, so. Um that obviously is a result of of several years of putting a a a plan together for our downtown Pasco area. And this commission was um a big uh was supportive of that and appreciate your help in putting that together, and here's a nice fancy book um to have it on your coffee tables. Um uh the second item is that the Fiery Foods Festival is scheduled for September ninth in downtown Pasco. Encourage commissioners and the public to. Uh hopefully they can attend that. And then the next week on September fifteenth. Uh we are celebrating for the very first time National Parking Day with a parklet outside of Pasco Specialty Kitchen. So if you're here. Um on September fifteenth, we'll have an outdoor dining space for uh residents and customers and people to. Come hang out in front of the specialty kitchen and enjoy some good food next to the market. So uh those are the items I have and appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Business from the commissioners? All right, um with nothing else, I will recommend a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Lerman, I move to adjourn this meeting tonight.
Awesome. Commissioner Lerman has moved. Commissioner Crouchfield has seconded. The meeting is adjourned.